Good evening and welcome to the regular town board meeting for the town of Tustin for October 13th, 2020. If you'd please stand and join me in the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got no announcements prior to the meeting. There is one correspondence. We received a letter of retirement for resignation for Jeff Richmond Richards, who was our court constable. He thanks Tustin for the ability to serve them and he was glad to be of assistance to us. On our payment of bills, our general account dispersed $47,905.24. The highway dispersed $18,100- $18,708.2. The water dispersed $1,776.53 and the sewer dispersed $20,936.78.
That total is in fact.
Yes, and our water was $17,776.53. Jill, you were able to go over the bills and Bruce went over the bills. Any discrepancies? Questions? I would entertain a motion to accept and pay the bills as presented. I've got a motion from Jill. A second? I will make a second. All in favor?
I with the correction.
Yeah, that will be correct.
Sorry.
Our division reports, highway utilized 951 gallons of diesel fuel, 928 was for highway and 23 was for non-highway use. Anyone in here? Okay. Okay. Patched holes in dirt unpaved roads, stockpiled sand for the winter, mowed the right of ways along the roads, paved parts of Cushepton Turnpike and Irish Town Road, replaced pipes on Blind Pond, Hankins and Irish Town Road. They ditched Irish Town Road, Perry Pond Road and Grassy Swamp Road and they cut trees on the flats. Water and sewer took lead and copper drinking water samples with the help of residents around town, took synthetic, organic and primary inorganic drinking water samples at wells, inspected 21 septic tanks, repaired and replaced several broken inspection ports, fixed a broken curve valve box on Oak Street, fixed a water leak inside well number one, took three final meter readings, marked out water and sewer lines for five New York DigSafe tickets, repaired the broken corporation stop valves for a service line on Third Avenue, maintained the sand beds by burning weeds, removing sledge and raking sand, completed monthly drinking water and wastewater sampling and reporting. They mowed at the wells, the sewer plant and the landfill. They added sodium bicarbonate to dosing tanks at the sewer plant for alkalinity adjustment. And they chlorinated the sand bed number two to kill bacterial growth at the bottom of the bed. Our building department code enforcement had 26 construction inspections, two fire and safety inspections, six certificate of occupancies, six certificate of compliance, 13 building permits, two accessory building and garage, one camping, two for renovation, alteration, commercial construction, two deck, one driveway permit, one electrical, one logging permit, two roof replacements, one solar permit, 16 CEVO violation searches. The building inspector and the clerk attended webinar training on 9/8 on NEC code changes, on 9/10 on top 10 things need to know regarding energy code 2020 and prescriptive building envelope. 9/11 advanced in-service part one and the 2020 advanced in-service part two. On 9/15, the building inspector took the mandated test and passed and on 9/17, the clerk took stated mandated test and also passed. Money is collected by the office from September 1 to September 30. $4,165.20.
Noted is higher than usual. That department has been collecting a lot of money this year.
Yeah, their billing permits are up and actually so are their NEC of all violation searches are up. That's usually an indication of new residents. The assessors report during the month of September, the calls picked up from the mailing of the school tax bills. Most refer bills not received and questions on how to pay them. Many were able to use TaxLookUp.net and print off their own copy. During Hanson seems to be extremely good at returning calls and solving the problem when taxpayers leave her a message. She also directly contacted me on some of her questions. Additionally, several calls were received for newly constructed properties and instead of the assessment of them, so taxes could be estimated for the new owner and escrow accounts. I attended the Sullivan County Assessors Association meeting held at Doutor Pavilion to permit social distancing. No particularly hot topics were discussed, but many technical tidbits were mentioned and it was good to get perspectives from Charles Knapp, who's become the new director of the real property tax or Chris Knapp, I'm sorry, for Sullivan County. Small claims hearings were mentioned in most towns have a few from Evintine Properties and the problems we all face with dealing with James Burns, a proprietor and the poor quality of the evidence presented. So far, no town has received a court date for any claim due to COVID-19. Normally, the healing hearings are scheduled to be completed in August. We received four small claim tax cases this year, one invalid as it was for vacant land, was tagged onto the one for residence filed by the owner. Two others were filed. These claims will require much time and effort to refute. In past years, it has been possible to support the assessment and when the cases, I can lay hope it worked diligently to be successful this year also. From Ken Baimer, our sole assessor, Upper Delaware Council. Sue, would you like to do that? And I will move a microphone for you?
That would be great. Right over there? Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thanks for the mess. Um, I thought I'd need to ask. This month, we had an, oh, does that work for everybody? Okay. Not least presentation by Jeff Gilding and the President of the Upper Delaware. And it was incredibly interesting. I think the whole thing is posted on the UDC website. The study was funded by President of the Upper Delaware and the US Fish and Wildlife Service were looking for applications from area municipalities and organizations because they have money for this and it's spread it around. But it's an inclined map. That is the broad act. You have to come up with money in order to receive them. So Skinner's Fall, they will have six beds, six flats where they'll try different techniques, get rid of the not least. And that will happen during March. So it's kind of interesting for those of you who are, you know, looking to know more about that. As far as the UDC is concerned, from the committees, there is committees. The Worm Committee is continuing to work on the ten-litre vote launch, which was a problem because they, for whatever reason, unilaterally, the park service said no more fishing boats could launch from there. So it is just those. And so the UDC has, I don't know, we ourselves, I think we have cooperative funding for this, but there's a consultant working on it. A company called Bay H Industries in Homestead. And so they're looking at the geology, they're looking at the site and what could be done there. The boards got very involved. And so we're thinking of trying to make an effort to find a solution to the problem caused by the deep mud. It's made it difficult for people. So that's the progress and that's the one too. Project UDC, meaning Bone to Town, which you guys know, probably we were awarded the full amount for our complan part one and $900 for the second zoning rewrite grant, which was incomplete, but $900 actually is to pay the money that were given to the consultant for the work done. The 2021 cycle, our application for complan part two was approved for $9,000, which is not, which is much less than you would hope. The entire tag amount available was $25,000, which we shared among three towns. And everyone had to scale back their application. Amending the river management plan. It goes on and on, but anyway, the decision was is we went along with four towns that said we'd be finding with us to do a minor amendment process, include solar position paper in the R and P via a minor amendment process. For other towns said no. And seven pounds didn't weigh in at all. To do a minor amendment, you'd have to have, ask unanimously to have everyone on board. So clearly that wasn't working out. Tom Shepstone said we could add this to the R and P as a supplement. So the board decided to go on that supplement, pursue that, go in that direction. According to the previous park superintendent, that will be why the park service didn't accept it, but we feel we should have that done and we should do it this way because this way it's going to be done. Otherwise, it's not going to fly. So we did the tag, we did project review. Good. UDC alternate needed. So Dan, who is our second, we have two alternates to me. We have Evan Thado, who just got married, who is having a wonderful, has a wonderful new wife and is probably going to live out west for a good part of the year.
They're buying a house in Tyler Hill.
Really? Oh, so would Evan be continuing on with us?
Apparently not because he won't be in Tustin.
Oh, right. Okay. Well, Dan wasn't in Tustin either.
Well, I'll reach out to him tonight.
Reach out to him and find out because I need somebody who will go consistently to the Warren meeting.
They won't be moving here till this early spring.
Yeah.
That's, that's their outlook.
Yeah, it depends on his interest. But the Warren Committee is ideal for someone who works on the river in that direct runway. That's the focus of that committee. I can do it. I need a project. I need one that's do it all I can do. And I'm just looking for someone that will communicate with me via email a whole lot and who will go to meetings. Because I would like to step back from going to all these meetings, to be honest with you. So, and Dan is going off to travel the world for a couple of years, something like that. And he was wonderful. He's a friend of Evan's and he was very active. He put together cleanups and, you know, really good stuff. And I'm sure we can get back into the area at some point. But meanwhile, I'd like everybody to give this some thought and, you know, in the network of people that know that. And if Evan's going to stay on board, he might also have revenue. I didn't think of emailing him because he was minutes of getting married.
And the wonderful wife he has.
Yes, and he's so wonderful. Five years strategic plan. Okay, that was a big group of UDC. The meetings were played and now the meetings, they did a fantastic job. Anybody who wants to have me help there, they're amazing. And he represented us standards and then I joined in. But there's no report yet, there's no final document. So let's put that on hold. The overuse of access is probably going to be ongoing if we have as many people as we had. So there's a lot of pressure on resources all over New York State, not just here, where you had a lot of track of difficulties with parking, people all over in long gaps, 197, it's quite dangerous. So that will be ongoing. And but then again, maybe next summer it won't be that big. The 32nd Annual River Valley Awards, some of us, some of folks in Tustin got awards. And this should go to you, Crystal, if I can, because it's a really nice thing. And so Lori put together a booklet that would normally be handed out as a bank list, but we didn't have the bank list because of COVID. And the November presentation will be featuring geology maps of the area and television now for meetings at seven o'clock. First Thursday, everyone. The National Park Service, this is the final meeting for the acting superintendent, Baron Dry, permanent superintendent for the Upper Delaware City and recreational river has not been chosen as yet. The name grid Peterak will be the acting superintendent, I'm sure you remember. Colleen Hendrick has been hired as their land use planner. He's from Georgia. He hasn't worked for the park service before and that's about all I know about him. So, and we have, at the benefit of Shannon Valento, who's our land use planner, and she has been wonderful. She communicates with you, she copies you in on everything. She is an excellent communicator and happily has some expertise in the area of grants as well. So nobody has any questions. That's it.
Thank you. Will be our energy committee report. Randy? She's on mute. Hold on one second, Randy. You're on mute.
Okay, I'll start over. Um, all right. So I was just saying that Ben and I attended the NIPA LED streetlight construction kickoff meeting. And in attendance as well was a NIPA representative Chuck Herman, Peter Frangie from Booth de Conzo, he's the designer of the lighting, and Doug Wilson from D and M Electric. It was our final meeting to discuss and confirm Tustin's LED streetlight material and work order. We have ordered 113 lights, six decorative pendants for Main Street, 107 cobra head fixtures for all other poles, and everything is at 2,700K for all lights. We thought 3,000 was going to be unhealthy and too much light pollution in a small town. The installation crew will consist of two to five workers and will take less than two weeks to install. They'll begin to install within eight weeks. Of course, the pandemic's delaying things, but that's, it could be within six weeks, but let's say they put in our order for all our, our equipment. Safety is their primary concern. They'll be following all CDC requirements. Ben was designated the point of contact for any issues that could arise for installation and also in the future. All trash from the job will be sorted out, documented, recycled or disposed of to code. Installers will cut the wire to the light, put the fixture up and add a fuse. Before finishing the install of each light, the wiring will be assessed and replaced if brittle or faulty. This cost has been built into the job. Then the armature will be assessed and replaced if bent or faulty as well. Noses will be added to each fixture with a tag and phone number. That was designed for Tustin. This cost has also been built into the job. Once the lights are installed, Michael will in update the NICE registry for our 113 LED streetlights. We will be trained in dimming the lights if we'd like to do so. Dimming can be applied to any or all of the lights to save energy, reduce light pollution and extend the life of the bulbs, which have a 25-year life expectancy. In the near future, Wi-Fi cameras and other smart city nodes, nodes will be discussed at an aggregation meeting with the other towns in a phase two of installation. Um, Tustin qualifies for a $20,000 grant for smart city nodes, which is great because that, that'll cover a lot of probably the Wi-Fi. Then we had a TEC meeting on 9/30 in attendance with myself, Jennifer Porter and Cori Ann Manzel from Center for Eco-Technology. Because of the pandemic, delivery of the horse food scrap digester is still undetermined, but will probably ship in November from Seattle. In the meantime, Cory's team at Center for Eco-Technology has virtually trained seven food, Tustin food merchants who have signed up to collect their food scraps. And their enthusiasm has been inspiring. I've been picking up food grade buckets donated by Weiss Markets, like probably every other day, for food scrap collection to be distributed for free to the participating food merchants. The buckets are four and five gallons with lids and handles and a custom-made sticker. They're very easy to clean. I've been using one at the house here just for experiment and what a dream to clean them. Soft plastic collection. We have our third trex bench of recycled material will soon be delivered to the library. They requested one and so they get one. And our soft plastic collection total to date since August 2019 is 5,415 pounds. So that's it. Thank you. Thanks, Ben.
You're welcome, Randy. Thank you.
Randy, can you hear me?
Which question? I think Jane.
Can you hear me?
It's pretty low. Your volume on the board is hard to hear.
Well, Randy?
Yeah, I hear you now. Okay.
You said in the near future, Wi-Fi cameras and other smart city nodes will be discussed and then qualify for $20,000 grant. Can that grant go for cameras?
The grant can, it covers anything you, you decide to put in your, you know, in your notes. It won't go as far as doing Wi-Fi and cameras, but you know, Ben and I'll go over what the costs are and you guys can figure out, you know, what your needs are. I know we need Wi-Fi for town events and things like that, but you can always add, you know, it's a free $20,000, so we can always add to, to your needs with cameras and such at any or all, you know, it's very customizable.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
Any other questions for Randy? Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Grants?
Okay, the October grants report. This is the activity for September 2020. UDC, the 2019 to 2020 grants was mentioned by Sue. We've received 900 for the zoning rewrite project and we received $10,000 for part one of the comprehensive plan. And we were awarded 9,000 for part two of the comprehensive plan project, which is good because as Sue mentioned, there was only 25,000 to divide amongst the three applicants. So I feel happy that we got the 9,000. The Bridge New York Grant for the Culvert continues, although people, you know, you don't see the process, the progress, but it is continuing. Much of the recent time has been spent with the row, which they call it. It's the right-of-way where to establish ownership of properties that are needed for the temporary bridge that's going to go on before the final bridge. Homeland Security and Emergency Service Grant. What a disappointment. We submitted a detailed letter of intent for a $950,000 project to upgrade the three wells in the water district. We're thankful because we did have our letter of intent reviewed by Freda Eisenberg, who's the director of Sullivan County Planning. And she reviewed it prior to submission. However, in the end, our request was determined ineligible because A, generators are not an eligible activity, although we were led to believe they were at a former meeting, and the wells are not insured by FEMA. And so they would not support the project. Future possible grants, the town is working with the Flats Neighborhood Watch Group. To this end, we're seeking funds for cameras, hence my question to Randy. We located its specific strategic locations on the flats. Any questions?
Thank you, Jane. In old business, number one set a budget workshop, which we'll set that for our regular first Tuesday. At 6:30?
That's election day, by the way.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody all right with that?
Doesn't take me all day to vote.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to do Zoom only. Have an option down here.
What are you saying?
We are having, we, the town of Tustin is going to be open for in-person election or voting, rather, in-person election, for in-person voting down here in the town hall.
No, we couldn't have a meeting.
No, they have the whole thing.
Yeah. Do we have, is a complaint going to be that Monday, the second? No.
No.
It's the second and fourth, Thursday.
It's the 2026. So it won't be the next one, which would be the Monday.
You want to do the 27th of this month?
October 27?
The Tuesday?
That's a Tuesday.
What time?
6:30. Jill, does that work for you? Does that give you enough time? The 27th?
It's a chamber conference meeting tonight.
I'll be done at work. I'll be cleaning.
The 27th, you said? At 6:30?
Are we going to then cancel the regular workshop?
We'll cancel the regular workshop due to election day.
Is that zoning puts on a problem?
I would make a motion to set, so October 27, the 6:30 PM, a special meeting for the purpose of a budget workshop.
A second.
All in favor? Hi. Set a budget public hearing. Should we do that on the 10th, prior to our regular meeting?
So what time then?
We could do 6 o'clock. The regular meeting is at 6:30. Does that work?
Yep. We need a motion?
Please.
I move that we set a budget public hearing for November 10th at 6:00 PM.
Second? All in favor? Opposed? This is what I've missed.
I'd like to ask about the roof. We've mentioned it last week and
Yeah, that's, it's still due to be done. There was a delay in getting some of the paperwork started. That's why they didn't do their October 1st, but they'll be in touch with Kelly as soon as they get the materials and they still figure about one week's time.
Okay, because Kelly said she hadn't heard from them at all.
I can reach out for them tomorrow also. Any other old business? Public comment?
So committee kind of came to a little fault there because of COVID and everything and we weren't having live meetings. So zoning is not going to work for me because of the hours I get home and stuff. So I see how we can start with live meetings, right?
Until he says, until the governor says otherwise, yes.
So what I have, we've given the attorney comments, you know, on the new schedule uses, there were very few comments. And then either maybe the rest of these comments. So I hope to have them here for you tonight. That last chapter of zoning that had the new schedule uses, you know, schedule uses and then his zoning that, which has been on hold for the last six months. So, but I didn't quite make it tonight. So we're getting together.
I'm going to have you, Kathy, if you can use the actual microphone so that the audience can't hear and the board. You could actually sit there if you want. You don't have to kneel down.
Okay, can you hear? Yeah, right. So, you know, the zoning rewrite committee has had finished the new scheduled uses, the attorney, or attorney to review that. Peter Manny reviewed it in the last chapter, 11, the EBA information that needed a little bit of change. So we have that about ready to go and I'm going to get that to the board as soon. That's the one that we'll have to go over to counties another 239. There's minor changes in it, but we'll still have to go to county. So we can get that one back on the road. And then I'd like to start the committee. We had the last meeting, we've gone through the sign law, which definitely needed to be upgraded, the sign and we had the fence law. And the small-scale animal husbandry and anything else, this kind of word, wanted to get. So we'd like to start, you know, meeting again. We did, we used to do second and fourth Monday if one of the dates is available. We also maybe try to have meetings this
And you've got the comprehensive plans on the second and fourth?
We do. We do. I'm sorry, Kathy, I don't hear well. But we have the comp plan now scheduled for the second and fourth. We also said though, that we wouldn't, well, it's okay to prepare the zoning. But we said that zoning, we wouldn't approve until this comp plan is completed.
This was already, this was already approved in such the park service, et cetera, the county. This is the one that needed minor changes. And this one is important to get adopted because this has the new zoning map, which we had worked with the county on. And, you know, the zoning map, it changed the districts. So this was not like a new section of zoning. This is the one that we had completed.
Okay, yeah, because look, can I work with Peter and?
I think this is, you understand this one, I said this is going here.
Yeah.
They need to get through. And then if you don't want us to look at the other, the sign law, this one that really needs to get through. Because it's completely illegal the way it's written now. In other words, you don't want, this is something the committee does not need to be approved. What I have to give you is the changes from the attorney, except we do the, except comment type thing. So as far as the other sections that we're working on, is it my understanding?
If you, into the mic a little while, please.
It's my understanding, you don't want us to meet completely.
Yeah, we'll work on the stuff that we'd already sent out for the 239. It's going to have to go back out. And then I will talk with Peter and Jackie and then see how we're going to go forward with that.
As we say, we probably have to move that UDC.
Yes, that's, that's, yeah, we understood that. Comment from outside?
Steven Stewart has a question?
Got to unmute him.
Yep, Star, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you. My question is again pertaining to the culvert replacement on Main Street by my property on Erie Avenue. At the end of September, I spoke with Robert Coggin, who's negotiating the right-of-ways. And I asked him about the overflow pipes that Skip Feagles had put in when he was the highway superintendent. And the initial, the initial plan that I read from Schumacher Engineering indicated that they were not necessary. He indicated to, secondly, he indicated that according to their study, they were not going to change the size of the overflow on the culvert because they deemed it adequate. And I have strong objections to that. Their engineer has never been on Erie Avenue at that dam when we've had our really heavy rainstorms. From the time that Skip Feagles put those overflow pipes in, there was only one time that Little Lake Erie overtopped the dam and flooded the basement of my building at 93 Erie Avenue. And that was in June of 2006, when we had a 500-year storm. And the Delaware River rose 27 vertical feet within a matter of hours. So it was hydraulic backup that prevented Little Lake Erie from flowing. As you know, we've had record rainfalls. The rainfall in August of 2019 that destroyed Erie Avenue and my sidewalk. Those overflow pipes were successful in keeping Lake Erie from overtopping and flooding the rest of the property. Every single major rain that we've had since that time, those overflow pipes have done their job. They've kept the water from overtopping the dam. The engineer has said, the hydraulic analysis indicates that these two overflow pipes are not required with the new structure. Yet he did, yet he said they are not changing the size of the opening of the new structure. So that does not make sense. And he also said additionally, that the DEC has indicated that these two pipes need to be removed. I don't know if the town has received any notification from the DEC about those pipes, but I'm really concerned about this. Their engineers have no firsthand, on-the-ground knowledge of how those overflow pipes work. And yet they're wanting to say that they're not effective, that they're not needed. I see it every time there's a heavy rain. I have a video that my wife took that I can provide for you. I really need the town to make sure that in, that the DOT does not act irresponsibly and remove those pipes. Thank you.
Steve?
Yes?
Hear me, Steve?
I hear you, yes.
Oh, good. I, you've addressed this point before, the overflow, right?
Yes, I have.
Go back and mention it. And the first response was the engineer said no. Then there was a second comment from actually David Hewin that said, look, you have a community resident that is saying, we have to look at this. And we looked at it, to my knowledge, and still said no. However, you're still expressing concern and you mentioned that you have a video. Did you say that?
Absolutely. My wife has a video, the last major rainstorm we had.
There's a way that you can forward the video to me. I will re-ask them and show them that and say that it has been asked again and very much concern is being raised. Because I know that we've tried, I've tried, and you've tried, but maybe a picture's worth a thousand words?
Possibly. I will have that sent to you. I just don't understand how their, their report said that they, they're not going to change the size of the overflow, the outflow of the dam, that it's adequate, yet they have never, they've never seen the flooding that happens before those two overflow pipes went in. They've never, never been there during a rain. They're just using computer-generated data to make their decision. So I will get those to you and I thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Emma Star?
Star?
Star? You're on mute. I'm on mute, or? Hold on one second, Star, will we get you unmuted? I think you've got to click for, to unmute yourself. There should be some.
Got it.
Okay.
I think that did it, right?
You did it, yeah.
Okay, actually, this is one of the things I wanted to ask about. The sound, the audio in this meeting has been just all over the map. Some people you hear very clearly. Ben, you come through loud and clear. Jane was all mumbling and not that she was mumbling, but that was the sound that was coming through. I couldn't understand almost anything that Sue Sullivan did with her UDC report. So is there any way to stabilize and modulize the, the sound so that everybody can hear everybody else?
I think that's something we're going to have to work on, Star. I think for the rest of the meeting, we should be okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'd like to give you, yep, we're going to get this cleared up. But we'll try to work on it for this meeting at least so that you can, you can hear the people that are also speaking, especially like in the audience.
And I, I don't remember this being such a problem in the other one. It was fully Zoom with everybody. Is that something to do with, which who's using what mic?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's because you're able to hear me because I'm right close to my computer, the microphone for the audience. But unfortunately, the, my computer's not picking up very well for the, the rest of the people. Everybody in here can hear fine. They can hear you fine because we got the microphone. But unfortunately, it's, the Zoom is taking the hit on quality.
Okay. The other thing I just wanted to say is that I, I've been having a very difficult time with noise and while driving on Main Street. I'm going to be writing a letter to the town about this. And I'm hoping to enlist the help of town residents and the town board to see if this can't be corrected.
Okay, it's not a new concern. I know I have worked with the Neighborhood Watch in getting the police down there to assist them in some of their stuff. You know, I, I think one of the biggest things that I need to let the people know is if you're looking for enforcement, we have to have the enforcement from the proper agency. The town board will assist in any way that we can in getting that done. But we're not the enforcement agency that can write the ticket for the loud muffler.
Okay, I've also spoken with the state police officer today, Biz Jack, I think his name is. And he basically painted a very negative picture that there's, oh, there's nothing that can be done. We, we have to catch them in the act. These guys are going up and down that Main Street at, you know, 90 miles an hour. There's no way, even if I call right away and say, hey, they are here. They can't scramble in time. And I can't get pictures of it because they go through so fast, they're, they're gone before you know it. But this is dangerous. It's really dangerous. I was out down there last Saturday. And what they had, families with little kids, both sides of the street were lined with cars. It was just one narrow strip through the, the middle. And multiple cars and trucks with loud mufflers revving their engines, screaming to a stop, starting up again in a, in a jump start, racing start. This is really dangerous and somebody's got to do something about it. It can't wait for some police trust speed trap to be set up.
Well, what did, we had a meeting I had with one of the planning members from the county and one of the Bridge Street businesses. We've come up with a couple of different ideas, some, for some traffic calming ideas. We're going to try to get those implemented and see if they help. So that's the way we're kind of approaching it right now.
Well, traffic calming is not going to work on a driver that goes through mid-town at great speed and, you know, flips the bird to you as, as he goes by.
Okay. Duly noted. Thank you, Star. Jim, did you have a? Okay. I'm waved off. Mike, are you? You're muted.
Here. Just a follow-up. I sent an email out to the board members concerning the trash around town. And any action that can be taken in that direction would be a positive move.
Yes, that has, that's one of our COVID results right now.
Yes, indeed.
Any other public comment? I've got none here and none out there. Okay.
You can tell Mike that we're putting more in the budget, we're planning to put more in the budget for garbage disposal.
He loves it when we spend money. He likes it when we spend money. Jane said that we're, yeah, Jane said that we are putting more money in for refuse pickup, so. Moving into new business, under number one, Jane and I have met with Ken Klein. And he has agreed that he would work for the town of Tustin should our current attorney win the election. So I would make a motion to appoint Ken Klein as an attorney for the town.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The appointment of court officers. We've got two more people from the New York State Court Officers currently working in Sullivan County, Scott Schoonmaker, who is recently retired, and Crystal Gadson, who is currently working. We're looking to appoint them to replace our vacancies. Any questions on that at all?
There's three that you have listed.
James, we're already appointed. James, we are already appointed.
Can I just say that I've worked with Crystal and Scott for years and they are very well-trained? They're on top of what they're doing. And I would suggest that they are very good choices.
That was Danielle. Just, yeah, I was just getting ready to ask that. I would make the motion. Do I have a second? All in favor? Opposed? Number three, approve the Narasburg Water and Sewer to Auction, the town truck with the VIN ending in B as in boy, 54931. This is the truck that was replaced by the current one. Be able to use that money to offset the cost of the new one.
I move that, did you make the motion or no?
No, you're making, I'll accept your motion.
That on Watson's International?
Yes. Second, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Brutal road closure on October 31st from the intersection of Second Avenue and Third Avenue. And around through intersection, intersection of Second Avenue and Fourth Avenue to end at the intersection of Fourth Avenue and Third Street. This is for the youth, youth program to do their trunk and treat for.
Some times.
Well, we could do that. I was just going to ask her that. You're talking from?
From four until about 6:30, seven, we'll say seven, from four to seven, you see?
Four to seven, because we have to give us.
And we are still looking for trunks. Anyone that wants to do trunks? We have it set up, so it'll be a one-way thing with lots of social distancing, all that good stuff. But we do need a few more trunks.
Okay, I move, move that we close the road October 31st. The road's listed in the agenda.
Between the hours of 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM. So I have a motion for that. I need a second. All in favor? Opposed? And I've got a request for a road closure on Main Street on Friday, October 30th. And I believe also the 16th, correct, Crystal?
They sent the request to you. I didn't.
Okay. That was for the 16th and the 30th, and that is to do the, on Main Street as they did previous. And I believe that the times that they wanted.
Five to seven?
5:30 to 8:00 PM.
So it's this Friday and then.
Yes. And they, they have been in contact with the other business owners. And we've also asked for assistance on Bridge Street from them so that we don't have the traffic congestion. No, that's a Main Street one, Main Street closure for the. This time they're going to do, the, the last one that they did was for a fashion show and a mixer and entertainment. They're, what they're doing is trying to get more people onto Main Street and be able to social distance because they can't get them inside the restaurant. So they closed it for a short period of time.
Like an arts, I know.
Yeah.
It's led by Aaron from the One Grand Bookstore, but it's basically an arts-related.
5:30 to 8:00 are the hours. I would put that in the form of a motion that we approve the closure of Main, Main Street on the 16th and the 30th of October. With them also to provide direction for parking off Main Street, which I spoke to Aaron. I'm sorry. Yes. A second? Gil, thank you. All in favor? Aye, and opposed? Number six is the Halloween curfew, to be in effect from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM on October 30th. October 30th at 9:00 PM, ending 6:00 AM. No, I'm sorry. 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM on both October 30th and the 31st. In effect for the minors under 18 years of age, unaccompanied by an adult.
Second, those states?
Yeah, that's for Friday and Saturday night. Danielle, anything in that that I need to specific?
Just to be clear though, that the one that's in effect October 31st actually ends on November 1st. That's 6:00 AM. Right?
Yes, thank you. That was just confusing me a little. Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? Winter restrictions for snow and ice removal. There'll be no overnight parking on Main Street from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM from November 15th, 2020 through April 25th, 2021 to facilitate snow removal. Following roads were closed for temporary discontinuance of snow plowing. Following roads were closed for temporary discontinuance of snow plowing, sanding and ice removal in accordance with Highway Law two zero five between December first, twenty twenty and April first, twenty twenty-one. Irish Town Road, the end of the Black Top to the bottom of Smith Hughes. Deep Hollow Road from Lackawaxen Road to Keshetan Turnpike to the second house near County Route twenty-two. Keshetan Turnpike from Walls Pond Road to State Highway ninety-seven to Ten Mile River Road, number ten. Tustin Road from State Highway ninety-seven to Stoneridge Bridge to the railroad tracks. Line Pond Road from Whirlpool or Whipperwill Hunting Club to the town line. Lake Erie restrictions during the winter months from November first, twenty twenty through April first, twenty twenty-one. Motorized vehicles, example snowmobiles, all terrain vehicles and cars will not be allowed access to Little Lake Erie. Winter weight restrictions, seasonal weight restrictions on certain roads shall be in effect whereas the highway superintendent of the town of Tustin has made known to the town board of the town of Tustin that the following roads are in danger of sustaining damage due to the present condition of the traveled roads and weather conditions as a result of trucks in excess of ten tons. Ackerman, Blind Pond, Brook Road, Buddenhagen, Keshetan Turnpike, Crawford, Dob, Dexheimer, Evergreen, Francis Drive, Bressy Swamp, Hoffman, Humphrey, Lackawaxen, Irish Town, Walls Pond, New Wyden, Parker, Perry Pond, Ryer Shawk, Swamp Pond, Trout Pond, A and B, and Woodrow. And it being the opinion of the town board, such highways would be materially injured by the operation of such vehicles thereon during the months of November through April, inclusive and pursuant to the authority contained and set forth in Vehicle Traffic Law, Section sixteen sixty, sub eleven. Now therefore be resolved and determined that the town exclude from here to forementioned roads, any vehicle with a combined weight and truck and its load in excess of ten tons during the months of February through April, inclusive each year and exceptions being necessary, deliveries to residents as well as school buses. The exclusion shall remain in effect until removal of signs as directed by the town board. Put that in a form of a motion and a second?
All second.
All in favor? I opposed. I would make a motion to accept the resignation of Court Officer Richards for the purposes of retirement. I can take a second on that. All in favor? Opposed? I did, we did that already. Um, is there any other new business that we've missed? Okay, then I am going to reopen the floor to public comment, starting inside. Yes, sir?
Uh, Crystal, a question for you. Uh, you say that additional trunks are needed, is that more participation? You give candy out of your car?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you dress up in a costume, um, the kids are not allowed to kind of reach. Um, everyone has to wear a mask. So you have your, some people are making cool little things, like a little pipe and you can drop the candy in their bag, which is kind of cute. Or you can just set it in, you can set it on table. Um, no, they can't help themselves. Um, unless it were to be like on a table, they can grab and take one.
Right. Away from the car.
Yeah, yeah. Yes. If you would like to volunteer, just let me know, um, you know how to get ahold of me? But the more the merrier. There you go, decorate your truck. I can put them next to you.
Any other questions from the floor?
And it's Dave Bong.
Yep, Dave, I'm getting ready to, I'm just making sure the floor is done first. Oh.
Just one thought, Bernie talks about, um, the parking issue. So when you, when you close Main Street, what if you left Main Street open from each store direction to the parking lot and this is closed?
The question that we're on the floor is regarding parking and with the closure of Main Street. And the suggestion was to make sure that the, uh, Main Street was only closed, uh, to allow parking still in the parking area behind the Wayne Bank. And that is, that is what is being closed, it'll be closed only from, you could still go to, yeah, you could, yeah. Question for the floor, Bernie?
With the closing of Main Street, the organization that's closing, or the business that's closing, what if you made them responsible for the parking? There's no parking on Bridge Street, no parking on Fifth Street. If there's parking there, you're not enforcing the park, parking with your own people. Well, let them close Main Street.
The question was regarding parking and, uh, having the organizers be responsible for making sure parking on Bridge Street in, uh, Fifth is enforced. Um, and that is one of the things that we talked to Aaron about. They're supposed to have one or two ambassadors that will repeat the municipal lots for the purpose of parking. Any other questions from the floor? Uh, Starr?
Yes, um, I just want to thank you for repeating the questions because it was a lot easier to understand what was going on when you did that. Um, just in reference to, uh, Mike's point about the trash, there is a temporary solution that I noticed, uh, on one of the weekends, they had those two trash, regular trash containers and recycled containers down there, which were piled to the sky. But somebody, some brilliant person, put one of those great big black trash bags in the middle between the two of them and people were throwing stuff in there. It really cut down on the things that were blowing around on the deck and also over into the, onto the sidewalk. So that might be a way to do it. I don't know how good it would be in a windstorm or in a rainstorm, but if you even have just those extra bags there, people seem to be willing to use them when the, when the other bins were full.
Uh, Dave?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I noticed on my report, I did not have the flushing of hydrants on October twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh from six AM to twelve noon.
October twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh?
Correct.
From six AM to twelve noon. Okay. So as an announcement, um, for the meeting, we would advise those that are at attendance that on October twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, from the hours of six AM to twelve noon, that there will be hydrant flushings within the district and that will also be posted. Any other questions? From outside? Okay, uh, do we have any board comments? Billy, I, I'll take a chance one side. Jane and I have met with, uh, two different meetings, one with hazard mitigation, where we spoke about the water issues, trying to see if we can get any FEMA money. She also, uh, did the letter that you saw that, uh, got rejected, but we're still hopeful that there might be some stuff out there. And then this morning, we, uh, met with the CEO of New York State Electric and Gas and had a meeting regarding the, uh, planned upgrades to the system, uh, mostly the Yule and Substation, which affects the lower end of Tustin. And then also some other works that are gonna be done here in the town. So hopefully that'll, we'll see that in the next two years, probably twenty twenty-one. So I, I know some of the residents will be happy about that, hopefully. Bill, Jane? Bruce? Meeting reminders are, are work session. And then we have our regular, our next regular meeting. Remember to vote.
I think we'll be in person voting here.
And it will be in person here at the town. Um, it's being, being no other comment, we do, uh, I am going to make a motion that we enter executive session for the purpose of pending litigation. I will take a second from the. All in favor? Aye. I thank the people for attending in person and also on Zoom. And with the exception of our attorney, and I think most people are gonna get clicked out.
I wouldn't expect that you would be taking any action after the executive session, so.
I'll see you at Halloween.
Thank you.
Just one thing, just, um, Evan, Evan just texted me and said, "Don't tell people that I'm, that I'm buying a house yet, not till I've got it."
He sat on the damn.
Yeah, right, right.